And we're good.
We're good, okay. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to this regularly scheduled February 27, 2019 Kalistoga Planning Commission meeting. Would you please have a roll call?
Noted for the record that all commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner McNair with an excused absence.
Thank you. Would you all please rise for a pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to comply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We are going to add a little something to the agenda this evening. Commissioner Scott? Sir? Okay. Anyway, Commissioner Cooper is going to be sworn in. He was reappointed and he had some medical issues that he's been taking care of well, thank you, but he needs to be sworn in, so if the city clerk would be so kind.
I, Scott Cooper, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemy, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or the purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you. Good to be back.
Commissioner Cooper?
Have I done that? That's true.
No, not really.
Okay, moving on to C, public comments. Public comments is an opportunity to address the planning commission items of interest to the public that do not appear on the agenda. Comments should be limited to three minutes. The commission cannot consider any issue or take action on items raised during public comment. Anyone of any interest? Seeing none? Okay, we'll move on. To D, adoption of the meeting agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented tonight?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Communications, correspondence, staff.
What about the minute?
They haven't got there yet.
Do you want to review it? Yeah, of course.
Excuse me. We did receive one letter related to item G1 on the agenda, the single-family dwelling design review at 1406 Foothill. Copies of that are in front of you and a couple copies are also placed at the back.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to F, consent calendar, minutes of approval, draft minutes for January 23, 2019. Commissioner Wilks?
Yeah, I just would like to note there is one typo and it happened to change the meaning of the sentence. If you would look on line 62, there is, at the end of the sentence on line 62, what was supposed to read as formula was written as formal, and it does change the meaning of the sentence, so we could make that correction.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so noting the corrections, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Moving on briskly here. G, public hearing, design review, DR 2018-10, consideration of a design review application to allow the reconstruction of a single-family dwelling at 1406 Foothill Boulevard. May I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Coats, commissioners, good evening. So the first item, first public hearing, it's a design review for a single-family home at 1406 Foothill Boulevard. This is the corner of Foothill and Spring. The subject parcel is about two-tenths of an acre. The proposed structure replaces or would replace a previous similarly situated single-family structure that was originally built around 1915. Now, this property is zoned R3, which is multifamily, but you are able to reconstruct a prior structure there, which is what is actually proposed here, and since the prior structure was a single-family, that there would be allowed to reconstruct that single-family residence here despite the R3 zoning. Now, if you'll recall, at some point, a lotline adjustment was done in favor of the neighboring parcel for the Francis house that shrunk this parcel and brought the lotline closer to the existing structure. The applicant for the design review tonight applied for a variance to have those setbacks reduced in consideration of that reduced setback. That was approved, the variance for those reduced setbacks was approved by the planning commission last year. Now, while a design review for a single-family home outside the rural residential hillside district would generally be handled at the staff level, the planning commission at the time of the variance did request the design review come back to them when it was ready. So the design you have in your packet before you tonight, it could be called contemporary craftsman style. It primarily utilizes board and bat siding, stone veneer, some things that are quite nice are the craftsman elements that have been incorporated into it, like the tapered columns on the front porch and the knee braces, and you'll see in the staff report, there's a picture of the original structure and then the newly proposed structure, and you'll see that the original structure had very similar columns and those knee braces. So incorporating those into the new structure really emphasizes that craftsman style. The design also emphasizes Kalistoga's small-town rural character. It's sensitive to the surrounding architecture, as we talked about, it uses traditional materials. The design of the home also complies with the Foothill corridor character area. One particular point I would note, and there was some discussion about this, I believe, when this was under consideration for a variance, is that the design does provide good vehicular access also off of Foothill. At the approach to Foothill, the driveway is relatively level, so there's a good kind of starting off point, there's good visibility, and further down on the driveway, there's also an area for vehicles to turn around, so nobody has to back out onto Foothill. Other than the setbacks, which a variance was approved for, the design does comply with all the relevant development standards. You'll notice in the plan set that there's very ample landscaping that's proposed, a number of the existing trees, including oaks and maples, are preserved, and there are some new redwood trees that are contemplated as well. This project is exempt from SEQA, as it's a single-family home in a residential zoning district. We mentioned previously, we did receive one letter regarding this application from the public that came in today, and staff does recommend approval of this design review subject to the conditions included in the draft resolution. I would also note that the applicant, Jason Pasquetti, and his architect, David McNeil, are both here. They have a materials board. When they come up, they'll pass that around for you to look at, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, staff. Any questions? I'm staff. I'm really here tonight, let me tell you. Commissioners, you have any question of staff?
No.
None? Okay, great. This is a public hearing, so I will open it up, and if the applicant would feel free to come up first and find if any of the commissioners have any questions of you.
I have a small sample of the county.
You can go ahead. I'm sure they can look as you present your project. There you go.
Did you have any further questions?
I have no questions. No, I think the colors are great, myself. I'm speaking on for myself. I don't really have any comments. Anything that you would like to bring up? I do only have one question in the, if we approve the design review. Notes in number eight, just to make sure, you are okay with the sidewalks, the improvements there? I say they're six-foot wide and you've got the ADA approach. You're on board with all that?
You know, I have no problem with that. It's probably going to, oh, sorry. The six-foot sidewalk is probably going to require removing two of the oak trees, though. One of the trees is five-foot off of the face of curb, and it grows at about a 60-degree angle into the sidewalk existing, and the other one is right at six-foot at the tree trunk.
And now, this is a question for staff. If they were to alter that in some fashion to go around it to preserve the trees, would it still meet the requirements? The minimum requirements?
We believe it would.
If they work with Public Works, you can coordinate that with my Kearns, and I've had situations where I've done workarounds around trees, so.
Yeah, I have no problem doing the concrete or the ADA ramp. I don't want to do the engineering for the ramp because it's going to involve Caltrans. I would think that-
It's a stock plan, but I just noticed, the reason I asked the question, the sidewalk was 6 feet, and wondering if there was any, and you've already mentioned the trees, but there was an issue with that. That's the reason I brought it up, so certainly if you're willing and talking with Public Works, that maybe we could-
Yeah, I know there has been some back and forth with Public Works regarding the sidewalk and ADA ramp, and obviously, all of the final civil designs for the sidewalk and ADA ramp will be subject to final Public Works approval, and so I think definitely we can figure out a way to work with them to find something that hopefully preserves the trees and still accomplishes the same purpose.
Okay, and then the sidewalk, or the ADA ramp coming out, it's, the actual slope of the road there at Spring is actually at 9 percent, so you're going to be dumping people off of an ADA into 9 percent.
So, because those seem to be things that pop up later down the road historically, and I bring that up to make sure that-
I have no problem installing them if I have a set of plans and you guys have a permit with Caltrans to allow me to get out there.
Okay, great. That's the only question I have. Anyone else?
Yeah, I've got two questions. One is, I'm curious, because I've never come across this before. You've noted that you have these either 13-inch or 11-inch ICF wall.
Insulated concrete forms.
Ah, okay.
The house will have no lumber in it. It's all metal studs on the interior. The exterior is all concrete, insulated concrete forms. The floors are all concrete, and the roof is going to be concrete with a metal roof over top of it, so you can't tell what it is.
Okay, that explains that. A couple of questions I have relative to the design. Could you tell me, because it's not listed here, what is the depth of the front porch?
Six feet.
So it does meet the design guidelines. Are you familiar with that?
For the front porch, I'm not.
Okay, the residential design guidelines, which encourages the use of front porches, but determines that a front porch dimensionally starts at a minimum of six feet.
Oh.
So as long as you're at six feet, I think we're good. If you had said five feet, I was going to suggest if we could move it.
Yeah, it's right at six feet. It's exactly six feet.
Okay. And my last question is, is this home for you or is this a home for sale?
It's a home for me. Well, and my wife.
Okay. Other than that, I've done a lot of residential elevators, but I've never had one that came up into a bathroom.
That's the only place we can get it to go, is the top floor.
Yeah, okay.
At least the master bathroom, though.
Yeah, that's true. All right. That's my questions.
Okay. Commissioner Cooper?
Yeah, I just want to say, I appreciate you using ICF building system. I've heard them called thousand-year homes before. Given the fire danger, it's pretty much impervious to it, and it's impressive that using that system, you could still keep the same design element as the previous property. So, and again, my two cents worth, if it's possible to preserve the trees, that would be favorable as well. Yeah, but it looks really good.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Abner? Nothing? Okay. Hearing nothing else from the commission, this is a public hearing. The gentleman, thank you so much. Anyone else would like to say something? Please feel free to do so.
Good evening. I'm Noreen Moses from 1419 Fourth Street, and I would like to say I am honored to have been here to hear Mr. Cooper take the oath of office, and I thank you for signing up for another heavy-duty volunteer job. It's folks like all of you that keep the idea of America moving along and alive, and I thank you for your service. It's wonderful. I wanted to say that last night, I was reading the website of the meeting tonight and reading about this project, and I was much impressed by the positive statements that were made about it, and I support every one of them, and I certainly hope you will pass this project. I think it's fine. Now, there were some comments that did not appear in what was on the online write-up last night, and those comments were, "It sets a dangerous precedent to grant any variance. You think parking is a problem? Get over it. It is not possible to build a duplex in an area zoned R3, and since the previous single-family home was demolished, another single-family home cannot replace it." Those are all remarks that I remember having addressed to me or my neighbors when we appeared here as neighbors of the proposed fourplex at Fourth Street and Washington, and we were disappointed to have those remarks made to us. Now, some of the remarks that were on the website that I thought were wonderful said, "As this is the reconstruction of a pre-existing structure, a single-family home is allowed on this lot. Architectural plans are proportionate to the size of the building area and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Well-placed garage. Design will not impair or interfere with the enjoyment of other property in the area." Now, I realize there's one significant difference between this project and the project proposed at Fourth and Washington, and that difference is, one property owner applied for a variance and the other property owner did not. Myself and our other neighbors are not opposed to multi-use of property, but we are opposed to overbuilding on it, and these comments that I just made now, that I thought were so positive on the website last night, could have been taken verbatim from the statements made by Donna Higgins and Jeffrey Stambor and somewhat me when we came before this panel. So now they're appearing in how this project is approved, and I hope you will approve it. I think it's fine. But I hope when we come back to you again, which I assume we will, that you will have the same mindset about what's proposed to happen at Fourth and Washington, because it's quite a different reception of the two projects. They're both R3, they both had a single-family home on them originally, and I don't see why a nice duplex where each unit would have a double-car garage. I mean, that's one of the comments made about this project, nice placement of the garage. Well, I hope when we come before you again, you will have those same positive ideas in mind for preservation of the neighborhood, the old existing neighborhood, and the quality of the houses that are there and the parking. Thank you. Thank you all again for your service. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and any additional comments from commissioners? None? And, okay, if not-
I'll be interested to watch this construction. I'm interested in the concrete.
I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving design review application DR 2018-10 for a single-family home located at 1406 Foothill Boulevard.
Do I have, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you. And thank you to the applicant. Nice job. Okay, moving on. To G2, Pikahun Sellers' Use Permit, UP 2019-5, consideration of a use permit application to establish a wine tasting and retail business within an existing commercial space at 1329 Lincoln Avenue. Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner Abner. Staff report, please.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. So the second public hearing tonight, it's the relocation of an existing tasting room to an existing commercial building at 1329 Lincoln Avenue. Pikahun Sellers is currently located at 1458 Lincoln Avenue. This is a small building at the rear of the Depot property. Pikahun received its use permit to operate a tasting room in May of 2016, and they would like to relocate to an existing commercial space at 1329. This would allow them expanded retail sales and better visibility. The space that they're proposing moving to is about 1,200 square feet compared to their existing 400 square feet. That additional space will allow them to expand their retail offering in addition to the tasting room service they provide, and my understanding is it'll also allow them to actually house their business's administrative functions within the space as well, which is something that the 400 square feet currently doesn't really allow. The subject property features a two-story building. This is obviously a relatively new building on Lincoln Avenue. I think it's around 10 years old. The first-floor space that Pikahun would like to occupy was previously the home of the Carmel Gallery. That closed in early 2018. The second floor includes the offices of Illumination Technologies. This building is set back a little bit further from the sidewalk and includes a space for some outdoor seating out front. Pikahun is also looking at including some outdoor seating in the rear of the building as well. Their proposed relocation of the use would allow greater visibility for them, and it would continue allowing a unique wine tasting experience, and as I said, allow for that expanded retail presence. These goals are consistent with general plan policies and the downtown character area overlay. Now, this project site is, of course, zoned downtown commercial, and wine tasting rooms are allowed in the downtown commercial district by use permit. As this is a current use that is relocating, though, a new use permit does have to be procured. The draft resolution that's included in your packet also includes a condition of approval about local grape sourcing that's consistent with city ordinances. As this is a reuse of an existing commercial space, the parking requirements for the space have already been met, and it seems that this use would be compatible with the surrounding retail office, restaurant, and service uses on that stretch of Lincoln. As this is the reuse of an existing facility, the project is also categorically exempt from SEQA. Staff does recommend the approval of the use permit subject to the conditions in the draft resolution. The applicant herself is actually out of the country. She's in France at the moment. She did send Carly Silva, who is her tasting room manager. She is here tonight, so if you have any questions specifically about Pikahun's operations or maybe even the proposed relocation, Carly might be able to answer those questions for you. And with that, that concludes my brief staff report.
Okay. Commissioners, any question of staff? None? Okay. This is a public hearing. I will open it, and if the applicant or their representative would like to come up. If not, that's okay. Don't have anything to say, huh? Okay, really good. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask if there's any additional questions from commissioners.
I have none. I think it's, clearly, they had probably the worst location to see, and they're still hanging in there, so I think that this will probably be a good move for them, and I'm pleased to see that they'll have more space. I am curious as to how you have your experience with the retail portion, since we've had lots of discussions of requirements for incorporating retail along with wine tasting, and you seem to have, yeah, I would be interested in your thoughts in terms of, you seem to have had a, it's been a good experience to incorporate that.
Can I reach? Yeah. No, it's been wonderful for us. In fact, the amount of people that come into the tasting room to taste wine are taken aback by the eclectic mix, the artisanal quality, just the small, you know, vendors that we choose to work with, because we like to work with people, not corporations, which does set us apart. We've worked hard to make sure that we are unique in what we offer, not just with our wines, but with the merchandise that we sell that really tells Claire's story. So we're going to expand upon that because there is a lot of room for growth in that area for us. We're women that love to drink great wine and shop, so we're passing on that philosophy to others. Yeah.
I think it's a good location, so, and it is, it's not another new tasting room. It's moving an existing one, so I've got no issue with that.
Okay. And, go ahead. Commissioner Cooper?
And for me, of course, she's not just another winery or not just another winemaker. Claire has poured her heart and soul into not only her wine, but her business, and I'm just glad that she made Kalistoga her home, and I'm very excited to see you being able to expand to a more enjoyable location. I'm definitely in favor.
Thank you. We're both very excited. We're both Kalistoga residents. I've lived here for 11 years as well with my husband and various wine country animal lover dogs. So, yes, and I have over 20 years of retail experience. Wine came second to me, so we're a good team, and we're going to make Kalistoga proud.
Excellent.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I applaud the statements made tonight. I agree. I know Claire, and they run a very, very class act down there, so, I say down there because you're coming up here. There's something to that effect, anyway. So, that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving a use permit allowing a wine tasting and retail business at 1329 Lincoln Avenue.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
We're here.
Okay. I am going to excuse myself. I have a very, very pressing personal matter, which staff is quite aware of, and so I am going to turn this over to Vice Chair Wilks, and I apologize that it's something that I need to deal with, so if you would excuse me. Commissioner Wilks?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you, commissioners. So we have with us tonight a special guest, Professor Bonnie Johnson from the University of Kansas School of Public Affairs and Administration. She is actually the Associate Director of the school, as well as Associate Professor of Urban Planning. I had her in my master's program, and our city manager also was one of her students. I think he's stepped out for a moment, but I think he's going to be coming back and joining us for this discussion, and one of Bonnie's main areas of re- And one of Bonnie's main areas of research and interest is staff reports. It's something we trade heavily in around here as planners, planning commissioners. And so, we did send out some materials. I know there was a lot there. I think she was hoping you could just briefly, hopefully skim some of those items. If not, we can pull some of them up on the projector. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bonnie, and we're hopefully going to have a discussion about innovation in staff reports, and maybe Lynn and I can learn a few things on how we can improve our staff reports and do an even better job for you guys.
Well, thank you, Zach. Thank all of you for being willing to talk about a subject that maybe doesn't get talked about very often, which is staff reports. And planners, every year, write thousands and thousands of these staff reports, and nobody has really looked at them to see what it is that we're doing and could we be doing a better job at them. But you have read tons of them. You had a couple tonight that you had to look at before your meeting. I was a city planner for eight years. I wrote a bunch of them, and I was a planning commissioner. And it was as a planning commissioner that I was reading these staff reports and wondering, can we do something different? Because even with my years of experience as a planner, I didn't quite feel like that the staff report was, was being as much help to me as I would have hoped it was. And so I embarked on this project of doing some research on staff reports, collected them from cities all across the U.S. And we all pretty much do sort of the same thing, some a little better than others, but there's nobody out there doing a staff report that you necessarily would pick up and go, oh, wow, I get to read a staff report today. This, this, this one, oh, here we go. So, nobody's really cracked the code of how to do this really enjoyable staff report to read. So I'm hoping that with your help, we can maybe reinvent these things and do a couple of things. Make it to where they are easier to read, easier to get to the information that you need, and that it's empowering, that particularly planning commissioners can feel like that they have the power and the information they need to make a good decision that they feel confident about, and that is serving their communities well. So, hoping that we can get to that level of staff report. Before we get going, I want to point out a couple of things. You have in front of you, one thing that is an informed consent statement. So, since I am a professor at the University of Kansas, the University of Kansas wants to make sure that I do ethical research, and you're my research subjects. And so they want to make sure that I don't harm you in my research, which, kind of talking about staff reports, maybe some people might think it was a little harmful, but we're trying to make them better. And so, the University of Kansas requires me to get your consent to being part of the study. And so if you would take a look at that, sign it, I will, I won't mention Scott Cooper as saying X unless Scott Cooper wants me to. And there is a place on the back to where if you want me to attribute comments to you, then check the box, and I will do that. If you don't care whether you're Planning Commissioner X or Planning Commissioner Y, then don't choose that. So that's the first thing to do, is, if you would sign that, that would be great. If, for some reason, you don't want me to use your comments, don't sign the form, and I won't use your comments in the study. I'm hopefully going to be doing a couple of different articles on the results of this. I've talked to planning commissioners across the U.S. And by talking to a bunch of you planning commissioners, hopefully we can come up with a new energized staff report for the future. And I'm going to give. So you have the informed consent form there in front of you. You also have another sheet that has basically the questions that I'm going to ask you tonight, and so you can take some notes if you want to, and you can turn this into me as well at the end of this. I will supplement these questions with some other questions as we go along, depending on what you have to say. And so, my first, first question is, did you have a chance to see the presentation that I put up on YouTube, so that you've, you've already heard me drone on about staff reports? Okay. Okay, great. Well, then, we will dispense with any sort of presentation, and we will jump into you giving me your feedback. So the first thing, we'll start off with perhaps some things that you like or appreciate about staff reports. So, what are some things that you're, that you're like, yes, I'm glad the staff report does this or that? And I'm going to take notes here on the flip side.
Could I ask a question in advance of getting started? So, obviously, for our benefit, it's important to come up with some new ideas, but also for engagement purposes of citizens of our community. If they're, if they pick up a staff report from the table that is a lot more interesting than potentially what we see every day, then we're going to get them more engaged into our process, into the community. So that's an added benefit, I think, of trying to think outside of the box. And my question is, how much weight did you give to potential just citizens in your, in your ideas and thoughts versus commissioners?
So, that's another study. So I'm, I'm starting, I'm starting with planning commissioners and planners, and then getting their input, and then I'm going to move on to getting some citizens' input as well. So we'll, we'll try and triangulate the different points of view. But you've pointed out, one of the difficult parts about staff reports is, who is your audience? The citizen, the applicant, the planning commissioner, the city commission, potentially a judge, if it goes to court someday. There's just, it's hard to write one of these things, just because you have all these different audiences. And you, in particular, want a citizen to be able to read it, look at it, and they too have the information. They need to be empowered and feel good about, you know, local government and, you know, that kind of thing as well. So that's a really good point. So, and that's, good to start off with just some general questions. Are there some other just general things you'd like to ask about before we get into some things that maybe you like about staff reports?
Pretty much all in the same format, is what we see here. Of course, this is all I ever see, but is this follow-away format that you use all over the country?
Yes. It's, it's either...
They learn that at school, I guess.
Well, it's kind of funny. Not really. I have talked to professors at other universities, and it's rarely taught. And so planners learn how to do a staff report kind of on their first job. And the one thing that I found that was written about how to do a staff report was put out by the American Planning Association back in 1976, and it pretty much set the standard, and we're still pretty much doing what was in that 1976 report. Although it said it would be nice to have photographs, but they're so expensive. And so now, at least, we have staff reports that are starting to get photographs. But in the research that I did previously, we found so many staff reports that didn't even have photos in it, sort of still following that advice from 1976. So, so you guys actually have a really pretty good staff report that has a nice cover page, has the recommendation on the cover, has a motion on the cover, and has photos in it. There are a lot of staff reports that don't have that across the country, so we planners need to up our game.
I know, you know, I recognize, and you, I think you mentioned it, that you've got to serve a lot of audiences, including a legal audience, in making sure that what is recommended and what is then approved is, is legal and consistent with the general plans and all of the ordinances. But did you ever consider doing just a summary report that doesn't have so much jargon in it that the general public could better understand? Because most people don't really know the difference between so many of these technicalities that we have to follow. And I know you don't want to then have that run the risk of being contrary to what your legal detail report said.
Well, and I have, I've talked about this with a planning professor who's also a law professor, an attorney. And, and I asked him, I said, so if, could we do some sort of summary sort of staff report that goes out to the public, but more of those kind of technical details, they're in the file? So, they're there, they're in the file that is available to the public whenever anybody comes to ask. Or if it goes to court, the planners can go, here's the file. And, and he said, certainly. So you can offload some of that technical stuff into your file, that you have a record of it, but it doesn't necessarily have to be in the whole report.
Good. Good. Well, I think that, that, I mean, it is, when you, your first question of what do you like or appreciate about staff reports, and the first thing I always are looking at is, is this a defensible analysis?
On record.
And regardless of whatever decision we might make, is, is this a defensible analysis that got us to that point? And, and which I think that generally, our, the staff reports that you guys do are, are of that. Of course, the downside of that is that sometimes they are monumentally boring and take a while to get to the point. I, you know, every, every case, well, every case has, there, there's a, there's a kernel of the decision somewhere in there of, what are we really being asked to chew over? And sometimes that isn't really apparent in, here's the application, this is what it is, this is what they're applying for, yadda, yadda, yadda. And, and it would sometimes be nice to sort of get right to the salient question and, and have it up there right in front, so that you, you know, you, okay, you guys, we're going to ask you to chew on this one.
Almost like a section that says key issues or something like that.
Key issues, exactly. And, and that would be also something that would be, could be incorporated in, in some sort of, of, you know, short-form report or executive summary, I guess you could call it, or whatever it is. You know, I always fear that, I mean, I would be a very big proponent of a summary relative to the public having something that is more understandable to them. I always fear that, that they are not aware of the full report, and they come back later and say, I never saw that. You know, they gave me this instead. And so it would almost have to be an executive summary that was attached to the full report, so that all of the paper went to everybody, so that they didn't come back later and say, no, 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 I, this is, you know, I didn't have this information.
I think that's right. I think you'd have to kind of keep them...
Yeah, yeah.
Connected.
Now, if you, if this was online, which we, you could, you could have an executive report and have hyperlinks, you know, and then you could take care of that.
And then another important concern is to make sure that the workload is not increased by, you know, some of the other interesting elements.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, staff time is critical, especially when you're really busy. So the last thing you want to do is take on something that's going to make it more time-consuming, to deliver the message. It's got to be a concise message for us to assimilate, for us to understand. And specifically for me, I really appreciate engaging with the community. So whatever we do as planning commissioners, I think it's important that we make it easier for, you know, members of our community to, to understand it and to participate, and not be afraid of not having the right questions, not having the right...
Right.
Now, I can see where the summary might be harder to write than the...
Yeah.
Yeah. But I, I mean, a good example of that is that, especially people in, in the public who are interested enough in, in the case to pick up the report, so they, they're already interested. And, and one of the very first things in the report is basically a recital of the history of the property. Well, they already know the history of the property. You know, they, that's, it's like, ah, we got to plow through this to get to the real question. And, and so, you know, some sort of summary report could sort of cut to the chase and, and not spend a lot of time in recitals of things that make a defensible analysis.
From a staff perspective, one thing I do like about an effective staff report is it, it provides a good historical document. So, you know, 10, 15, 20 years later, when...
Right.
You have a completely new set of staff, and perhaps a new set of planning commissioners and elected officials, and there's nobody around, you can go back and there's sort of a trail of breadcrumbs, a paper trail, that here's what happened with this property, or maybe here's a relevant precedent that was set. And it, it helps you and can guide you in, you know, a future or current application for either a similar property or the same property.
Well, and we've had that situation of having to try to, you know, unearth and, you know, find out where the bodies are buried. Sometimes it's successful, and sometimes it's not. But, but that's a very good point. I was very impressed by some of the, I'll just call it the, the graphics of some of the examples of other cities. And, you know, it would be wonderful if, if, if that would be able to be done in some sort of easy template form, so that you don't, you don't have to go out and hire a graphic designer for every, every staff report you do. But if, but if a template could be created, then, then it would, you know, then they would have a same look. It would sort of know what to look for. But, but I find good graphics incredibly helpful.
And my good graphics, what's...
Well, you know, the, you know, the little key boxes over here of, here's some important stuff as an aside. I'm sensitive to fonts. I, you know, I very honestly hate Times New Roman. I think it's the hardest thing for me to read. And I, and usually when you find something that's well-presented, it's usually in an Arial font, or a Helvetica, or something like that. And, and so, you know, just, just issues like that, that, that make it easier. And, and, you know, using italics where it's, so that you, oh, I got to zone in on this, it's something different. Those sorts of things, which, again, it could be done almost in a template form, and sort of once you learn, learn the technique, it's like, you know, doing everything else.
And I too am a visual-oriented person, so, you know, in my emails, I tend to take snapshots, and it just helps me when I have visuals that jump out to me. It helps to understand, you know, a little more carefully data.
Yeah.
But at the same time, we don't want to obscure, which the most critical, important element is the, the data.
Is the, is the, yeah, the analysis.
Analysis.
If I might ask the commission, do you have any thoughts in the way that the data's organized? You know, obviously with our staff reports, we use headings and some headings, and sometimes some bullet points or things like that. You know, I've, I've seen a lot of cities that use tables, or use, you know, really shy away from big, long paragraphs that get real wordy, that people don't want to read. I'd be kind of curious your thoughts on, on some of those things, too.
Well, I think that the, you know, the way you set up the, the first page, sort of, you know, summary page of every case is, is... of, you know, summary page of every case is, is, is very well done. I think that, that, that then presenting the issue at hand, I think that perhaps that could be gotten into earlier. Things like, like the history of the property, things something like that, that could almost be a footnote. You know, it's like, if that isn't really salient to the particular issue being looked at, does, you know, then we got to plow through that. And so, you know, I think in some respects, obviously different in, in all cases. And of course, you know, occasionally, we've had a few of these in the last few years where you, you know, you'll have a case which really is, has some real existential kind of bearing on, on where we're going as a city and, you know, it's a, it's a big, big decision and, and the whole town is involved. Then, you know, then sort of the, the presentation of a staff report that is sort of much more thought out as a, as a understandable document for Joe Blow would be enormously helpful and, and takes more time and probably costs more to produce because it, it's, you know, it's also the issue of, of having the quality of reproduction. There's only so much a color Xerox machine can do. And, and, you know, we don't, obviously, those don't come, those cases don't come along very often, but, but when they do, if the doc, you know, you got these documents in there being, and everybody in town's got it. It'd be nice if it was a really clean package.
Well, Tim.
Do you always follow this format? Like, are there any issues that, how does that format change?
I think our format, you know, loosely follows this. I think depending on the type of entitlement or project or the complexity.
On major, major issues.
Yeah. You know, Lynn obviously knows our staff reports a little bit better than I do. I don't know if she's, you know, if there have been some staff reports that we've really mixed it up on.
Yeah, the main differences between current planning applications like use permits, design reviews, tentative maps, and then more advanced planning types of things, when we talk about marijuana cultivation or, you know, it's more of a discussion kind of thing and giving you some options. So that, to me, is the two biggest differences is when, you know, we have a specific application with certain plans and information that we're trying to get, you know, explain to you and then how that conforms to all of the codes and policies, so.
Always comes through your eyes? Do you ever read any of the following time or is it.
We usually summarize on those more advanced planning, more policy issues, you know, provide alternatives and options at the end.
Yeah.
I think we did that with outdoor cultivation, like it can be six plants, it can be zero plants, here's, you know, or it can be two, let's start with two and try that out for a while. And if there's not problems with two, let's go to four. So, I mean, on some of these things where there's no black or white or we don't have any precedent, you know, to guide us, we can just tell you what other communities are doing and feed that to you and, you know, so that kind of is a different format.
I found it very interesting in the example of that home store, forgot the name of it. It's one I'd never.
Menards.
Menards, yeah, what a name.
Yeah.
But that.
It's by milk and lumber.
Yeah. But there was, there was almost sort of two different ways to look at it and that was presented. And here's the upside of that and here's the upside of this. And it, and it, and I thought it was, it was well presented even for somebody who's not a planner and never thought of these things before could read that and go, "Oh, yeah, yeah, that makes a lot of sense." And, and of course, presenting that in that way, then when you finally come to, in the case of a staff of making a recommendation, then there is, I think, a tendency to say, "Okay, now I understand how you got there," or, you know, "I can go along with that."
Sort of working through the thought exercise.
Yeah, and again, that is, you know, that's probably, that's, that's beyond the scope of what is typically necessary, certainly in our little town. But, but clearly that was a case, it was a pretty important thing and in that, and so in, in something like that, it's very well, I thought, very, very well presented. Because, because I've always felt that one of the, one of the weaknesses in SEQA is the alternative section, which is really nothing more than just a bunch of BS. And, and, you know, so it, it really doesn't perform what it's supposed to do. And, but, but in that case where, in the example that was used, I thought that was a good, it wasn't an alternative, but it was, it was looking at the proposal from two completely different focus points. And I found that fascinating.
Well, the reality is, I'm not going to throw up in front of the fireplace with a bucket of popcorn and a staff report. So, you know, it does, or maybe I'm doing it wrong. But maybe you're going to help me find a way. I mean, you know, it delivers critical information and we have to be careful where you don't get too distracted because, you know, it's not necessarily the pleasure of reading. So we have to walk that line of making it interesting but yet not, you know, obscuring the important information that we have to digest.
Yeah. Well, again, I think that no matter what, it's always, you know, I'm always going, "Is this, is this a defensible analysis?" And that extends even to presentation. You know, presentation can skew something and, and you got to say, "Is this an even-handed analysis? And has it come off as even-handed?"
Does a staff report typically have a sort of consistency analysis that this is what you've done before and this is, like the lady was making a comment today, as we look at these, maybe it doesn't need to be done, but perhaps and sometimes it does, you know, reminds you, "This is what you've done before."
I mean, I think I've written some staff reports where, you know, talk about certain precedents being set. You know, you can certainly think, you know, if we were to have, you know, for example, another Formula Business application to come in, you know, we've, we've had several in the last 12 months and we've got a couple of different types that we've seen, so we've got some precedents in how they were treated. And, you know, I think that, you know, I could think of certainly, you know, that would be a good example of where you might want to talk about that in a staff report a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I know there's been a couple of, Tim is kind of our historian, you've taken us through some precedents on things that we have done.
Yeah.
As they apply to issues that are then before us.
Yeah, it's, you know, that, and again, that's, to me, that is critical. That is, you know, that is a chain of custody. And.
I like that.
Maybe that's something that needs to be, it is, but maybe it needs more focused on.
Well, and can I, and so, one thing that, because these staff reports kind of have to walk this fine line that Scott was talking about, and you want them to be interesting, but also they've, they've got to have that useful stuff in it that you need. That's kind of why I started trying to think of, can we think of other ways of doing this? And that's why I gave you what I was calling some avant-garde staff reports and not necessarily thinking that we really and truly would have a staff report that was a, a mobile or a collage, but hoping that that might spark an idea of, "Well, we could do this and that would actually work." And so I did put in front of you on your space, one of the avant-garde ones, which was a game board and, and not necessarily thinking that what we do is a game or, but that this is kind of a weird way of thinking about the, the Menards case of where you have the context of the site and then all the different criteria that came into play, those sort of like what Tim was talking about, these different ways of, of looking at it. And then looking at that your options are, that sometimes you, with a case, you, you just want it to go back to the way it was. And, and sometimes that's a good idea, sometimes it's not doable. But, well, is our option that we'd like the past? Would we like it to just stay the same, the present? Do we really want to stick with what's in our comprehensive plan and future land use plan and say, "No, let's wait for this"? Or do you want the Menards, which doesn't fit with the current plan, but hey, maybe it does fit, or something else? So with this, just trying to simulate the idea of, here's these different things, these cards you could play and to try and decide what you want to do. So that's just one of the avant-garde staff reports I put out there. Did any of them make you think of something?
Well, I had, I had just visceral reaction and it, and I was trying to think, what, why is that? My, my conclusion is, is that, is, as soon as a staff report gets into any realm of art, you, it is no longer a valid analysis because, because art by definition is asking the viewer to interpret and, and add their thoughts into the art. And that's what makes art what it is.
Subjective rather than.
It's subjective. And, and so, as soon as you introduce, that's why you have got to be careful in terms of even the graphics. As soon as you introduce an element of art, you have skewed an analysis and I can just see that go into a judge and going, "What the hell is this?" You know? So I, I just reacted strongly right up and I went, just, that, that is something that cannot belong in, 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 because this has got to be an analysis that is even-handed and, and be, can be consistently showed as that. And if it's, and if it's not, we're, we're putting ourselves in an indefensible situation.
What if one planner is a better artist than another?
Exactly. I mean, it's, you know.
Well, then, my, my next, this kind of sets up a question I have. Can a, a staff report, is it okay for a staff report to ever make an, an argument for a particular way of thinking about? Could, can a staff report be persuasive? Is that okay?
Yeah, that's a.
Can I share a thought?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, this is kind of a staff, I'll just go back to how it's meant. I worked in a budget office and we used to prepare a budget presentation over camera. It was a little two or three minute video about a 285 page document. And so we only hit key points, key highlights, still do budget documents, but people like Scott Cooper who curled up next to that fire every night can actually, you know, you might watch a two minute YouTube about the information. So you, what, what if the way to present information, people, would people mind up without depth or clarity?
No, I, I, I lost all your audience, sorry.
But the reality is, I think from staff's perspective, a lot of times, you want to know what the commissioners want to know. That was what provided me the opportunity in your job. Same token, residency, what, what information do you want to know and how can we present it to you? That's what the staff report is. So as behaviors change, and I've, I've with my smartphone, I'm trying to figure this out. So we're all looking smartphones, are our staff reports available on smartphones? Are they easy to staff report on smartphones? And then you can get an image from the plans or our professional rendering on smartphones? Or maybe videos, maybe there's audio. I mean, nowadays, they don't listen to a, a recording of a staff report. When is the way to read a staff report? I don't, I don't think so, but the point is, if we're talking about more effective staff reports, you know, I don't know.
Well, it is, in that line, the, the example video of presenting that Menards thing and that, where again, it was presented, if, you know, there's, if you look at it this way and then if you look at it that way. And that was, that was as compelling as, as you can get for a home, home improvement store.
I don't know if, you know, that, it was a very good point you made, I think, about the persuasive, it's an interesting point anyway. I don't know that that's the right word. I mean, you are presenting a recommendation and you're presenting a foundation for that recommendation, a series of facts, and I don't know whether I'd call it persuasion or not, maybe it is, but it's certainly a string of logic that Lane brings you to their recommendation.
Right.
And then how much of your efforts are focused on those of us who actually read the staff reports versus those who write them? Where are you focusing or acquiring on?
I'd much rather read than write.
Yeah. Well, and that's, and that's part of, as, as I go through this, what I have to keep in mind is what is still doable for the planner? Because, let's face it, there's probably very few planning offices where they have all the time and resources in the world to, you know, do these whiz-bang staff reports.
Except for ours, right? Except for ours.
Well, yes, yes. But you, so we have to be mindful of the, the time and resources of the people putting these together. So that's also in the mix where the idea of maybe a podcast or something like that, it's like, well, is, is there the time and resources to do that? Maybe it is so effective that that's worthwhile to do that, but maybe not. And that's, hence my questions about, is there another way? So the, the video, is that something that would be useful or not? Since we're on the topic of the video.
Well, that, I think, depends on the subject, too, and the issue.
Mm-hmm. So if it, so what would be something that would maybe warrant a video?
Something the whole town's interested in.
Okay.
It's the sort of thing that could be, I think, really effective, or a video or even a, you know, call it part of a blog or, or something.
Podcast or something.
A podcast that, that was more of a policy decision that was going to be coming up as opposed to somebody who wants a variance to put their garage closer to the property line. But, but if something that's, that's going to be a policy that people are going to be interested in, that gives a basis for everybody to then bring their thoughts. They, they've, they've all heard the same thing and I think that probably possibly more people might, you know, might listen to that. If it was easy, if it, if they could go on the city's website and click to get it, that's obviously where, where it's got to come from. Then it would, that would, I think, I think for policy things, it would be, be worthwhile.
The Silver Rose side reports, they were structured, you know, one to see, you know, what was big, and then the plan, the drone, the whole construction side, and I want to say, it was, my, my experience, to put together some 3D images of what the site looked like before we'd seen one. For me, and suddenly me as staff, I think, what's coming around is.
Mm-hmm.
What do you think is like fairground? What's that mean? You know, what, what if the town, is there a way to.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Well, and, and some, like, so some of the others, like the, the ebook, did you try out the ebook?
No. Yeah.
Yeah, what did you think of that?
I, well, I, I thought it was, it was good, except that I thought, this is, this is way too many man-hours. You know, I just, it would have, it would have to have been assembled again in a, in a template form.
A template, sure.
Other than, because, because beyond that, it was just way overworked.
I was, I was talking with Bonnie last night about some of these examples, and I think you, you told me you had to have a graduate student who was sort of an expert in these things, help you put the ebook together.
Yeah, well, and, and, and so the, the ebook that, that I put together, to me, it seemed pretty basic, and it was really hard to do.
Yeah.
And, but there's ones that are really cool, and I was like, oh, how do I do the really cool one? And I'm going to have to call on some other expertise to figure that out. But when I was putting it together, I thought, ugh, if I only had a template, I could just boop, 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 and go.
And of course, the, the weakness is, is that everybody in this day and age is tired of seeing PowerPoints.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and so it, it tends to be just another PowerPoint.
Uh, there's a ebook template generating, self-generating service called Scribble, and they have multiple templates, and basically you can just highlight text from, so essentially, if you had it on the, on the internet, the substance of, of a staff report, you could easily just highlight it, insert it, and it fills in everything for you. So I mean, that would be the only effective way, I mean, literally it would take an extra one or two minutes, once you had the template.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's very visually stimulated, and easy to do, but the template would be the key.
Yeah, yeah.
We could tweet out our staff reports.
They're usually really short.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Maybe get them down to tweet format, that's good.
You'll get right up on my impeachment. The, you know, we're, I mean, there, there seems to be two tracks, because there's staff reports, which again are, you know, are written analysis, and, and how to perhaps communicate that easier. And then, and that is different than sort of the wider thing of how do, how does the city and, and us in combination, or whatever, communicate with the citizens relative, relative to some of the, you know, I'll, you know, use the fairgrounds as an example, which is a process, and perhaps, perhaps that becomes a record for the staff report that establishes a process where, because it has to be a process, you know? You start with, what do, what do we got? And, and you have to sort of document so everybody understands what, what we've acquired, what we've got our hands on. And then move into, and then what do we need, and then we, you know, and, and, and all of that could end up in a, you know, in a little book. But that's different than, than just counting down a staff report.
Seems like if the city had a, an official public relations staff position, that they would be able to, part of their, their job would be able to take this and create something for the citizens in the community, that would be, but of course, who has a dedicated public relations person?
Yeah.
And you're adding more work.
I've been in, in cities where, I mean, as, as applicants representative, where we are required to put together graphic presentations that are basically put on display for a week or so, in a given conference room that's dedicated in the city hall, kind of thing. And people can come in and, and they're, you know, and they give us a recipe, that you, you must have these things, and, and it's got to be in this particular format, so that they're all the same. And, and, you know, that's, that's nice, but I usually would end up billing my client literally thousands of dollars to be able to compile that.
Yeah, and I think there's a matter of gradients here, that as we go forward, is a, a staff report, for some of these small items, they're, they're just fine, and we don't, they don't, you don't need to do much more than you do now, but there may be issues that are very, very important, that you want to get that information out to the city, and you want people to know, want them to fully understand it, that would call for a totally different type of presentation.
But again, that would be, you could still template that, and there could be sort of, you could, they could.
But you don't want somebody who's coming in here for a small item, then all of a sudden, you've got to provide all this.
Yeah, if, because.
Bills and whistles, which nobody really cares about.
Potentially be done easily, yeah. It's, on a big project, then obviously, it, it's quite, they will willingly spend the money. Because it's how you sell the project.
Important.
Yeah.
Do we know how many people watch the, the television?
It's on YouTube, so you can see how many views there were.
It's a YouTube thing?
The, the videos are posted to YouTube.
Yeah.
I just wonder if it's an effective means of, it might give us an indication of who's really interested in just kind of everything that's going on, not particularly, not just a particular issue.
Well, and, and I have a question about, how, how do the staff reports affect your decision-making?
Very.
So like, like how do you use them to then make a decision? How do they factor in?
Well, speaking for myself, there's, the, the most important thing for me is to, is to understand that, that the decision is the consequence of this or that, either compliance or, or a documentable hardship. And, and so, if I, if that thread, to me, isn't there, then I probably got a problem, either with the project or with the staff report, but.
Yeah, from my side, it's absolutely critical.
Yeah.
I just checked a couple YouTube videos, and there's 10 and 11 views, so people are viewing them, but not significant numbers. Yeah.
Half a staff.
Half a staff, I know. But what I missed, the all excitement.
We've met the audience.
Well, and, and do you think that, that if staff reports were done differently, would they impact your decision-making? Can you foresee where it would be detrimental?
You know, yeah, the answer has to be, I hope not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, yes, that's, that was, it really is the only answer, is you hope it doesn't. It may make it easier to plow through it, and quicker to, to get your arms around it, but if it causes you to come to a different decision, that's not a good thing.
I'm, I'm curious, if when you're reading staff reports, and we reference code section or a general plan, policy, do you find yourself going and looking those things up, and kind of going beyond what's just in the staff report?
Yes, yeah, or, or if I can't find it, that's when Lynn finds me on the other side of her table.
No, I take your word.
We hope we're accurate.
But yeah, I think it's, I mean, I think it's inherent, really, in, in your whole analysis to say that, that the goal would be that, this wouldn't necessarily change your decision. It's just, how easy is it to get to that decision? And, and is it easier for everybody else to understand how you arrived at that decision?
Yeah.
Mainly, when I'm, and I'm speaking of the public.
Yeah, I could, but I think you could have kind of mentioned that, that so long, that it's, it's, well, it's important, because that's the public understands how you're getting to that decision. And that's the, you know, that's maybe the real nice benefit of these, or cases, is the, if the public can very easily go, and they might not agree, but they could say, oh, well, I see how they got there.
Right.
The last thing we want to do is cause any sort of confusion, either.
Yeah, and as you're going through that report, and, and you're following the, the logic of applying the terms of the general plan, you know, I usually come to the same conclusion, but those principles in the plan are broadly stated, so we can have, you know, well, this is what you think you mean by that statement, but I have a different view on it.
Well, and, and are there times when you've, you've, you've read the staff report, you come to the meeting, and you kind of think, yeah, I know this is how I'm gonna, I, I think I'm going to say yes to this? Then after the meeting, you then vote no? Does that ever happen? Where you change your mind by something that happened at the meeting?
Mm-hmm. It's happened to, it's happened to me a couple times.
Yeah, so what, what is that dynamic? What goes on that alters your decision-making?
It's almost inevitably, it's because you, you know, what is being sought is, is for a reason of some kind of hardship, and I'm not buying the hardship, and then hearing the testimony, I change my mind.
So hearing the testimony?
Yeah. Yeah, so it's not, it's not something from the staff report. It's, I mean, the staff report is an analysis, so I come in from, with that analysis, and I've got a, you know, I've got an attitude of where I'm going with it. But then, in, in the public testimony, this thing's like a hardship, then now take on a different realm.
And the, and the, you know, in the, during the discussion, things tend to unfold, and you get a better grasp of, of things when you're discussing with the people who.
That's true.
Care.
Yeah, and I think that, yeah, there's, there's times when you're, you're trying to find consensus, and so.
Um, well, we've kind of touched on this, about how staff reports should be made available. So, and we've, we even mentioned Twitter, but paper, podcast, video, online, a poster, is there some way that it should be made available that's a little different?
Of course, to me, the, the very first thing has to be that, what is, what is permissible in a legal challenge? So I suppose there always has to be a paper.
Right, there always has to be the file.
Yeah, there has to be the file, that, so that you, you're defensible that way. I think that I would probably rate the second thing is, is, is an executive summary. There would still be paper. I don't know how many people are gonna go online. That's, there's, there's a training element, element to that, you got to train the public to do it. And I don't know how easily that can be done. And I think that most people, for a podcast, first of all, wouldn't even know how to do it.
It just needs to be accessible online, as you saw, Noreen, she was, did the research last night, got the information, so she was prepared to come and give statements. So I think it's pretty, a paper, obviously, for record-keeping, and then just have a, a specific location where everybody knows they can find it, and they can download it, they can copy it, they can email it, whatever they want to do. And I don't think you need to be throwing it against the wall, kinds of various things out there. You know, if they want to find it, they will. If they don't, then most likely not going to.
If, if, if an, after an agenda's posted, if somebody picks it up at city hall, do you take questions from them?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, we, not infrequently have people come in and ask about an application, or an upcoming hearing, or, you know, particularly if they've gotten a notice in the mail, saying, tell me what this is about.
Right.
You know, in, in some ways, we orally then give them that executive summary that you're talking about. Here's, here's the topic, here's sort of the issues, and, and then usually point them to where the staff report or the materials are online.
So you're kind of giving them an oral executive summary.
And I hadn't thought about it that way before, but yeah, in some ways, that's what we are doing, yeah.
And that's, and every, that's going to be common everywhere.
Well, as you, as you looked through all those different things that I threw at you, the avant-garde staff reports, or the, the more typical staff reports, but presented a little differently, were there any bits and pieces that you particularly liked, or that you particularly didn't like?
Well, I would just try to convince you to, to stay out of the realm of art. Because I just.
And there's a particular font you didn't like either, too, right?
Well, that, in, in, but, but, yeah, but I, but I do like good graphics.
Let me ask you a question. Are there any, any matrices, as you've looked at all of this in cities, that, that would be helpful to us? I mean, like, how long it typically takes to process an application within the industry? What people charge for city fees, all those things?
Well, I'm sure there's something about how much gets charged, but there's not anything about how long to process.
Just varies place by place. So there's no sort of norm, this should only take four weeks or six weeks.
And, and as, when I did my research of looking at different staff reports all over the country, I asked each city, give me a simple staff report, an easy staff report. And I got from that, ones that were 80 pages long, ones that were a paragraph.
Right.
So, some communities, 80, 80 pages is easy. And others, they do, others, the staff report is the agenda. And that's, that's it. Nothing more.
You know, I've noticed that, back in the olden days, the staff reports are a lot shorter, because you had to type them, and if you wanted to make any corrections, you know, it was a big thing.
Yeah, yeah.
And somebody would write it out laboriously in longhand, and give it to a secretary, and then they would type it, and then, I mean, I've come across those in the files, where, you know, somebody's literally cutting and pasting, and, you know, they took the findings from the last one, and they put it in there, so, you know, I think we now have the freedom to write a first draft, and then rewrite, then hand it off to, you know, the other planner, and have them, you know, look it over, does this make sense to you? And then throw in some graphics if we have time, and if they lend themselves to that.
I certainly don't write a staff report from the beginning to the end, you know, in some cases, I might even write the last paragraph first, and write another part, and move stuff around, and insert a picture.
Well, and you kind of have an idea of where you're trying to go with it, what your recommendation is going to be, so you're trying to build a case, and so that, at the end of the report, when you get to the recommendation part, you understand where that came from.
Now, building a case, defensible.
But we, but we really have a lot more freedom now.
And one thing I do try to do, you know, in a staff report, is you sort of kind of get what you have to in there, and you think, oh, boy, this, this one page has a lot of blocky text, this would be a good spot, and a good opportunity for a picture to break this up, or some bullet points, so then you kind of go back and.
Right.
And at least try, within reasonable means, to make it a little more user-friendly.
And I think you've noticed, I'm a big fan of bullets, I'm a big fan of tables. You know, if you can put a development standards table in there, this is what's required, this is what the project, does it comply? Yes, no? You know, then you can minimize all the blah, blah, that goes before and after it. So that, yes, this conforms to all, you know, some code development standards, and, you know, and, like I said, I'm a big fan of bullets, to just try to, like, draw you to what the, what the points are, and to summarize things, rather than using a lot of verbs.
And, and one thing that we do that's not very common, that I hadn't done in any place that I'd worked before until here, is putting the line numbers on staff reports and resolutions, over in the margin. I, I mean, at least, I think from our perspective, it seems to help with the discussion, you know, and I would think that, you know, there's, there are times where you could say, you know, at line 40, what did you mean by XYZ?
Yeah, and you guys. Yeah, and you guys are the first ones I've seen that does that, of the hundreds of staff reports I've looked at. So you, you have an innovation. I don't know where you got that, but that's cool. And, and I think, Tim, you used it.
We copied it from our lawyers.
Yeah, I think Tim used it with the minutes. You said on this line, well, I think we're kind of heading towards the end here. And so I want to ask, is there anything I haven't brought up or asked about that you would want to tell me?
I have my dinner.
Well, you know, I don't know how, we, in like five minutes, I think we'll be done, unless, unless one of you launches into something.
I just, I, I think that the, I think that one of the salient things is the idea of this, of a summary. And then ideally, the, if something like that with, with the images of any given case, where somebody could find it on the website, what was coming up. They could, they could go to the city website, you know, where, and you can see the agenda and stuff. But you can see, and you've got a photograph of the house, where somebody says, I want to see where that is. Oh, I know that house. Boy, that would, you know, that would be great. But then again, that's, that's a whole nother work effort. And it's, so it's how could you cut and paste through your, through your staff report, and easily pop that into a, you know, something on, on the website?
And then, you know, talking about images of staff reports, you know, there's a lot of things that, you know, we could cut out and put in the body of the staff report. To keep them bigger, we, we include them as, as attachments, you know, like the vicinity map, or, you know, the plans. There, there's certainly places that put those things in the body of the report itself. And there's, you know, sort of a balancing act there.
Yeah, and, you know, it could be, I mean, what could be on a, on a website, on the, on the city's website, isn't necessarily the report, or, or, or what the recommendation is, or anything. It could be merely, this is going to be looked at by the planning commission. If you're interested, here, you can go and, and read the, read the staff report. Which is, you know, could also be easily online. And, but, but that sort of introductory thing of, it's really a teaser to say, does this interest you or not?
Well, we put the public hearing notices on the news page of the website. And what we've started doing is when we post that public hearing notices, also to upload the application materials. So we might not be done with the staff report, and might still be in review, or processing, or, you know, reproduction. But we thought it'd be helpful to at least get that up there, so they could start looking at plans, and the project statement, and any studies, and that kind of thing.
So just to plug, the materials that we think are going to be going on March 13th, the staff reports are not ready, but the application and the supporting materials are already up on the city website.
Is, is that what the newspaper picks up? Like, they had this last edition of the Tribune, I guess it was?
Well, they also publish our ads, so they have a heads-up, because we have to get the, the public notice.
No, but I mean, they had little articles for their,
They use that material.
Yeah, they've really stepped up, and they've really been putting, you know, because they didn't used to do that. The, but, but that, I mean, it's so much of that would alleviate the concern of, you know, how often do we come up and somebody says, I didn't hear about this until 2:00 this afternoon. And I'm really angry.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and so as many avenues as we could have to say, well, you know, bucko.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you feel like you get enough time to look at the reports and materials usually?
Well, yes, of course, I don't have a life, so it's not a problem.
Last packet came out so early that Alyssa got very confused, and she thought the meeting was last week, so.
Well, I think I'll, I will end with hopes and wishes. What would you, you hope comes out of all of this?
A very nice report.
A very nice report.
We're doing it. We're in business.
A template.
Template, yeah.
You know, it's an app that you can pull up, or something like that, and here's your template.
There was a way to make the whole process more efficient somehow, with a template or a tweak, to make your time even, even better well-spent.
We've been known to readapt former staff reports. Oh, it's a tasting room, let's just, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that is why, as I've talked to planners and planning commissions, it really is, we just don't know what each of us are doing. And so if you see a cool thing, like doing the numbers along the side, being able to tell people about that. I mean, as I've talked to people, even just things like a sidebar is a neat bell and whistle that they hadn't thought about doing.
Yeah, I love that idea.
So just, they're, they're not really that complicated things, just for some reason, we're not doing them. And I think it's just we're just in this rut of, we do these sort of complex, just text-heavy reports, and that's just how we've always done it.
Are you writing a dissertation on this, or are you just?
Well, and, and some articles, hopefully, about it.
Hopefully, you can forward them to us, we're looking forward to hearing more about what other commissioners across the country.
I have done four so far. Yep, and I'm getting ready to do about four more. So, yeah. Well, thank you very much for agreeing to do this. Not many, I can't talk about this with many people, so, so thank you for indulging me in talking about staff reports. I really appreciate it.
Thanks for efforts, yes.
If you can, please make sure you get these, yeah.
Vice Chair Wilkes, we still do have a meeting going, we have a couple items on the agenda.
I'm sorry.
I'm just assuming that you've assumed the chair.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, we have matters initiated by commissioners.
Sorry, Wally.
Out the door, out the door.
Hearing, none?
None.
All right, the director's report.
I just want to advise you, we have a couple items scheduled for March 13th, both of which I believe Commissioner Abernathy might be conflicted with. So you might not be making your 50 bucks the next meeting. But we will be meeting on March 13th.
Okay. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're so adjourned.
All right.